...at 6:00 PM at the City Hall Municipal Building 308 West Bank Street, Car Eagle Street, Texas, 7-834. Go to item number one, call meeting to order, it is 6:07. Item number two, roll call and establishment of point, I'll start to my right.
Sofia Morones.
Dino Heda Balderas.
Oscar Puente.
Go to item number three, the welcome and recognition of guests. Thank you all for being in attendance to tonight's meeting. Uh, we go to item number four, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation, on the God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
We go to item number five, citizens' comments. Want to write a little credit?
I'm on the agenda, number five. Is the item already on the agenda? I'm down there, number line five, somewhere down there.
I believe so, sir.
Yeah, I was told to sign in, but do you want me to speak now? Is that what you're saying?
No, we can, you have an agenda item, so we'll just wait. Thank you. Yeah, that is all. We go to item number six, approval of minutes. We have regular session meeting May 19th, regular session meeting June 16th, special session May 5th, 2015, special session May 12th, 2015, special session May 18th, special session May 26th, special session June 5th, special session June 6th, special session June 11th, and special session July 7th. Mario, I have issues.
There's some corrections?
Yes. Um, let's start with, we'll go to regular session meeting May 19th. On the, I wasn't mayor yet, so I only think maybe Adrian Delion should, name still be there so we can find the minutes. So instead of my name, Adrian Delion. A special session, May the 5th. Now it calls for, at the end, it says Martín Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem, should that be Adrian as well? Shouldn't that be Adrian? On May the 5th.
What item number was that?
What's the, uh, is closing the meeting at the end, the very end? They've got Martín Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem, signing the minutes, and then Melissa's attesting him. Shouldn't it be Adrian?
Uh, if he was absent, it would be, uh, Mr. Absence.
He was present.
But if he was present, then it has to be, it has to be him, right?
The reason I put that in there was because he wasn't coming anymore to sign.
Oh, he wasn't coming to sign?
We can change those. If they're unsigned, well, that's part of history.
All right. Uh, I have another one, again, uh, May the 12th, special session, May the 12th. Again, um, Adrian, instead of my name. And then May 18th, special session, May 18th. It states, I called the meeting to order approximately 9:00 AM, I wasn't mayor yet.
On when?
May 18th.
May 18th.
On item number one, it says Mayor Dino Heda Balderas called the meeting to order. I wasn't mayor yet.
So on May 12th.
It was Adrian.
It would state Adrian, right? On the 12th?
Yes.
Uh-huh. And then May 18th, um, it should state Mayor Adrian Delion. And then again, at the, at the, the end of the meeting, it should state Adrian Delion, comma, Mayor, on the 18th.
Those were the correct ones.
And, I got one.
May 26th, the same?
Yeah, May 26th, the same. Adrian Delion, instead of myself. Again, on June the 5th. It states Adrian Delion. Okay, now, on special session, June the 6th. When the election judge, uh, reads the election canvas, the only stuff that's on the minutes is mine, myself, Adrian, Oscar, Sophia. Shouldn't all the candidates' elections be on there, the election results?
Well, I can, I don't...
Yeah, 'cause this is like, well, I mean, this reflects that meeting, and she did state everybody's results.
I went by the, the old minutes, that's why I'm doing that. But I'll, I'll fix it.
They should all be there.
They should all be there.
Even, even the one, they lost.
Yeah. And then, let me see. On special session, July 7th, item 6.5. Uh, the motion was to continue with Garcia and Wright, and it's, not to enter, to contract, it was to continue with the contract.
Continue with the contract.
Yeah, 'cause this one states enter.
We had a...
And the minute state enter.
Well, that's what I, what I heard on there.
Uh, that's all I have, I don't know if you have.
I have some. This is Martín, and, and at any time, I'm, I cannot ask this question, but by all means, just let me know, okay? On page two, of, uh, I guess if I'm paging to the future, page two, which is the meeting of May 19th. If you look on item six, is there any way that we can have a copy of that, or is that, is that something that you already shared with us? Page two, number six. It says that the auditor president, the council, would, would file a report of the audit, and that we're in good standing. Is there any way that we can get a copy of that? Or is it that we can, may I have that find? Or is that something that we need to present at the budget workshop?
That, that, that was the auditor of the previous year.
Yes. But is there any way that we, we can get a copy of that?
We can get your copies of the audit report.
That's all?
And when, uh, of the documents, it's thick, but we can get copies of that.
You can print, print one and back, maybe say there. I, I don't know, they want one?
That's for last year's physical year.
Okay.
So it should would, it should would have been, you know, uh, 13, 14.
Yes.
We haven't done 14, 15. That's what we're going to be working on.
And that is to do it, or what I got in your red hat?
The auditor will be coming in sometime in the fall of, you know, November.
I can look at the one that you have, is that fine, that could come to?
Oh yeah, I have, I have one now.
And then, other question, and I, and I have one, it's already, the minutes are not in order by date, is there a certain regulation that they, they don't have to be in order by date, they're regular, regular, special, special?
Uh, no, it, it was just, there were too many, uh, too many minutes that hadn't been brought to the council for approval, and so, uh, what you did was you put in the regulars, the regular meetings of each month, up on top, and then the special ones at the bottom. But there's, you know, there's no, uh...
Is there any way that we can have by date? Is there any?
Well, yes, from now on, it'll be by date, because we're just caught up on, on those minutes, so they will be by date from now on.
Thank you, thank you. And then, if you look on page one, I think we're just, like, this is page one.
Go on the meeting.
Oh, on, yeah, on, uh, meeting, June 16th. Let me see how it says, regular meeting, and then the regular meeting, June 16th. I know that we have the attorney there, but just so, just for the record, I think, for right now, his special counsel.
That'll be July?
It's June 16th.
Regular session.
Mayor, I mean, please, intervene at any time, please. Should it read special counsel?
Yes.
Not city attorney?
Special counsel.
Right, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Which is the page in the minute?
That is on page one, June 9th, June 16th. June 16th. And then if you turn the page, of that same meeting, page four, again, where it says the city attorney, it should read special counsel. Just so we can make sure that's correct. Oh, get it down, put it down. Okay, now, on page seven of that same meeting, again, correct me if I can ask questions or not, but this is here, set on the agenda. Can you elaborate on what is Resolution 488? I want to make sure I know what I'm approving.
Uh, this is where they keep the meeting back on Tuesday.
That's the one to make sure that's, that, that there was a word with that, so is that the way to what?
Well...
That's, that's the way. I think the word was a bit different, but do you want, if you want to comment on? Is this the one she's saying that we...
This is the one we brought back?
Back on Tuesday.
The main helping the case issue, right?
No, according to chart. Okay. And then, Tina, I've covered a lot of the ones that I had on my question. Uh, Melissa, maybe you can elaborate on this one, on, uh, page four, of the June 5th meeting. June 5th, it's item 55, uh, discussion and action to modify Article 2. Can you see that one, Mario? Melissa? It's on page four of the June 5th meeting, special session. 1.5, it says item 5.5, discussion and action to modify Article 2, unsanitary, unsightly conditions, section 50, 57, growth or accumulation of weight, and...
I see that.
I just want to make sure, what, what is that?
That has to do with the unsanitary lots that we have around, around town.
Okay, so what, the north ends?
There were just mod, there were just modifying that, that's all that we're doing, you know? Uh, I believe they probably included that the last paragraph on, on the item there, a tall we, tall grass or which will not be permitted above 12 inches or higher. Foundation of this urgent subject impact is moving and clearing that lot, right table.
Okay, so they...
That's what they added to, to the ordinance that was in place.
But the ordinance or the, it has to be an ordinance, so it can't be a charter.
It was an ordinance, and then there, it was an ordinance, and it's on the charter. So, so they're adding this to the, they're adding this to that.
So I'm asking, is it an ordinance that we need to follow, or?
Well, it's, it's in the charter, it's, it's both ordinance, it's in the charter, I mean, which, when you pass, originally when they passed it, the passage is the ordinance, it went into the charter, so that's what I'm saying.
So shouldn't we have use of words then, at that time, in June 5th, of sort of ordinance, so we can, are we amending the ordinance, are we revising it? Because the question I ask, because this is a very important item for our community, is if we're going to approve this, then we need to make sure it's valid. I've had, you know, a lot of comments, comments there on this area, and I want to make sure that it's written correctly, and that it's valid, so to be honest, Mayor.
Well, if, uh, on the...
Well, let me just elaborate, because if you look further down, this item wasn't passed. If you look at the motion, their motion was made by, by Councilor Juan Andres Sánchez, seconded by Martín Pro Tem, Martín Lázaro to table the item, to bring back as an ordinance. So, it was never brought back.
Okay, that, okay.
So it has to be brought back to us as an ordinance?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, that's what, so, can we do that, Ms. Mayor?
Well, you, you can do it in a later time, yes.
Okay. Then I want...
If that's, if that's what you want, or right now, you, you have that on the books already, where, where, you know, uh, we're taking care of this particular problem that we have, the living land.
Right now.
Problem that we have, unsanitary, and that's already been done.
So that's what you take care of, but not the, but not this added portion on here?
Well, what they, you read down the bottom is what they're doing now, what they were doing now is that they're going up and taking a ruler, and, and they're measuring, you know, the height of the grass, and if it's above 12, then they're in violation.
Who does the checking on this?
Uh, Mr. Jamie Johnson and Calhoun Brothers. And while they're doing it, they're taking a picture of it. So that's when they write a letter to, to the property owner, uh, they're making sure that, that, you know, this is how high it is on this particular day, you know, and your violations, so we need for you to, uh, clean it up.
The day issued a violation, they do?
Yes, they do.
Do you get a response?
Uh, we've got a very good response, Mr. Johnson, since he's a certified inspector, state inspector. Uh, he works for the city, for his special, on a part-time basis. And so, yes, I mean, uh, they are, they are getting the public, that the property owners to, to, to take the, the lots, to take the, uh, those deflated homes that are up there, uh, they're going down, so far, they got about six or seven hundred down. Uh, the next one that they have planned is the one that's on, uh, Pena and 14th Street, a two-story home, that's going down. And so, yes, they're, they're, uh, these, like, they're, they're, and, uh, they are getting, uh, they're incorporating.
And that's coming through our municipal board, right? Those lines coming through?
Yes.
So you will bring it back in, to make sure the word's aligned?
We'll have to take a look at it, like, exactly, you know, what kind of, uh, if they, if they had an ordinance in place, that they were going to present to the council, I'm not sure, you know, what they missed by, what's in here.
Okay, I have one more.
Okay, do you bring that item back to us, back to the regular meeting, in August?
Put it back.
On, uh, the June, uh, July 7th meeting, on page two, when you went into, if I have the session at 6:05, and it states he came back right at 6:07, I think we took probably longer than two minutes.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure that it's correct. Is it black and white?
Well, that's the correct one.
Okay. Just go back.
It was longer than that.
And then on that same date, on, uh, July 7th, page four, just make sure that you indicate the names, Ms. Guerra. Maybe indicate the names on who voted and who did not, or who abstained. You see that? Correct?
What game is that?
It's on page four, Melissa, on July 7th? You look at those, uh, toward, where it said on item 6.4. You see that 6.4?
Oh, you want me to add your name on there, Pro Tem?
Yeah, just indicate the names there, not, not just the title, that way, there's no question, will you, what?
Do you want, do you want all the approval? Are you on all the names on the approvals, and?
Well, I see it on...
There's the names on the nose, or, or the abstain, you know, would you prefer to have that, you know?
Well, the way we, I mean, there used to be, like, if I abstained, I would want my name to be, you know, have a lot of stings.
Sure, abstain, right.
That way it can be...
So it's abstain, and that, that's one.
And the, and the nose, and the yes, you know, make sure that whoever voted, yeah.
And, Mrs. Guerra, on that item on page four on top, when you put the municipal judge's name, on all the other minutes, you have it one way, and then on this other one, you have it a whole different way. So just make sure.
Remember where I showed you?
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah, it's part of you. Okay, now for the approval, Mario, do you want, um, Mr. Attorney, I guess I should direct this to you, do you think that's to approve them individually, or all, as a one?
You can, you can approve them all at, all at once, if you want to do.
With corrections, correct?
Yes, they will, they will have to get approved all, all at one time.
So we can just make the, just approve the minutes with correction?
Well, if you're making corrections on them, then it's probably better to approve the ones that you're approving without, unless you're going to make the corrections as part of the, as part of the approval process.
I'll do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, you know, as long as they get corrected.
Well, yes.
Then I make a motion that we approve the minutes, the regular session, May 19th, June 16th, May 5th, May 12th, May 18th, May 26th, June 5th, June 6th, June 11th, and July 7th, special sessions with including corrections.
I second that.
There's a motion made by Councilwoman Morones, to, for the approval of minutes with corrections, a second by Councilwoman Puente, all in favor, if I can say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion is carried. We go to item number seven, discussion and appropriate action on payment of bills for
Mario, the unkeyed, for the 4th of July celebration, for this, that amount that are on paper, part of the, of the original amount, we can use for that celebration?
Yes. Now, we have, we don't have a tabulation yet, we still have some bills that are up, pending. When we have the, all the bills, or invoices, come in, and we'll, we're going to inform the council of the total amount that we spend on that celebration. But, uh, you're going to find, you know, you're going to find them, uh, there's a breakdown of what you have in there, there's, uh, on the letter, letter size of paper after, well, we have the hotel motel account, and that's basically where all of them are going to be at, yes. But these are not all the bills, and there's still some that are pending. Especially, you know, the, uh, the overtime, double time, because, uh, we were able to catch, uh, in the last paper, we were able to catch one date, it went into the past paycheck, uh, the other will go into the next one coming up, so, so, uh, that is still pending.
Okay, but, but the item says that we're including the bill for June 2015, correct?
We're, we're including, uh, June bills, those have already been paid, uh, they're, before you, you know, for your approval. Uh, we have bills that have been unpaid, that those are in the letter size, that, uh, we need also your approval. Uh, the bills will be paid as we're able to pay them, okay? As we are able to pay those bills. Uh, some of those funds, especially the water fund, uh, we're, we're taking a very close look at that, because if you go to the, uh, water fund, unpaid bills, there's quite a bit, uh, we still have the, the funds to pay all of them. So we'll, we'll go in there, and we'll make decisions as to which ones we'll pay first, and then, you know, we'll go down the line, as the funds come in. Uh, I believe we have sent out the billing already, so we should start, you know, uh, some revenues for the water ones, right?
Please excuse me for my question, Ms. Martín, but in the agenda, say, pay bills for June 2015, but you're asking us to approve these two, and you say July.
Well, we'll put July in there, the bills that, uh, some of, some of the bills were, uh, the purchase order was signed June, you know, so we'll pay them in, in, in July.
So the long form you gave us, these are bills still pending, have not been paid yet?
Those, the long form has been paid, the short form has not.
These have been paid?
Yes, these have been paid.
These have been paid, yeah, these have been paid. I know, you know, we're all very busy.
The problem that I have is that, you know, a lot of those bills are payable before that 10th of each month, and when you don't pay them on time, then they're accruing interest, and so, that makes it a little, a little worse, so, uh, we're just going to have to play with it, with this bill, but, we're trying to play catch-up, uh, as much as we're able to, and, uh, we're hoping for the best.
There's not a problem with the gas, Minister, as far as...
No, no, I don't get none.
No, I think I... No, I was just going to say, I know we're all really busy, and I should, I should argue with you, respect, but I just have to, you know, I just have to, did you get this before? And, I like to, I like to look at them, and if I have any questions, make my note. And, you can say, you can look.
It's quite a bit of information in there, I can assure you, it's a lot. These are, these are your, your basic billings, you know, from year to year, from month to month, uh, there are not too many changes, uh...
There's one here, move office to new location.
And your general account, Mike?
General account?
Yes, yes, our general account.
What, uh, what company? What's the vendor name?
It's, they circle C Transport, LCC, uh, move office to new location. Can you tell us what office?
Uh, Medina.
That is the, the removal of the old office at the landfill.
Uh-huh.
They moved that in order to put the new office.
And they charged, and that old office is what?
The old office, I believe, is still out there, which is...
Could it be used, not being used, you know?
No.
Not being used, empty? Thank you.
Do you want to, yeah, come up here, so I can... Mario, dirt hauling, dirt hauling? There's a charge for dirt hauling.
Vendor number, the vendor?
Uh, vendor is...
They were using a lot of contract, uh, labor, uh, not only for hauling of dirt, uh, for the employees to, uh, cover up, you know, the water leaks. Uh, there were contracts out there where they were cleaning the alley, CD alleys, uh, there were contracts up there where they were cleaning the, some of the, uh, water wells outside the city limits, you know, the growth, the grass growth, all, all around the, the fancy, and so, you're going to be seeing here, you know, some of those contracts that they would take up. I have since stopped all of that, all right?
Because I see a taming.
Yes, that's one, that, that, those are the, those are the, yes, uh-huh, those are the alleyways. I have since stopped all of that, I think that with the employees that we have, we should be able to cover that. I don't see a need to be contracted, not the work, but, I think we're allowing employees, we should be able to do that. So that has ceased. And as we're working along, and we see, you know, uh, contracts that are out there, that I believe that we're, we should be able to do the work, then, you know, uh, we're going to, you know, terminate those contracts. gonna, you know, terminate those contracts. You're gonna see a lot of these firemen, firemen checks, you know, that are, that are in here. Uh, of course, they're getting paid their monthly, monthly, uh, salaries, you know, uh, it's a voluntary by department.
So because of the financial situation we're in today, some of these will get paid at a later date?
Yes. As, as we're able to pay them, you know, we look forward to the payment based on that deal.
And the payment might include, uh, a surcharge and a safety or something?
If, 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 that could be the case whatsoever.
Again, I already see, uh, I could be wrong, and it's probably never wrong, please. And I know that we're correcting today. Twenty-three hundred, south fifth star.
Are you gonna find that, you're gonna find Sabala sent, sent any of those, or those are previous?
Eleven hundred.
Previous, those are previous.
Yeah, I see that.
Uh, he was, definitely had there, so, so, uh...
Another eleven hundred, sixty-seven.
So, yes.
Sabala.
A lot, a lot of that's gonna cease here.
That's for the newspaper?
Yes.
Like, I know it says advertisement, do you know more or less what was advertised during that time?
I'm not sure, but I know there were a lot of, of pop, pop topic notices, that were, they were in the newspaper, uh, unemployment notices, you know?
Well, yeah, they, they, they will do, it's advertisements, city clerk, city marshal, but this one just says advertisement.
Yeah, well, we just put, they probably just put advertisement, but they, they exclude everything that they were advertising for.
Because let me tell you why, the discrepancy.
Mm-hmm.
Four hundred, four hundred, three hundred, and then one there is one, twelve hundred. So what was advertised at a twelve hundred, at June 4, and then June 4, three hundred?
We'll probably have to go back and look at, at the actual invoice.
Fifteen hundred for June 4.
I think if you notice on, on someone's advertisement, they were taking the whole page of advertisements, so, so, those are gonna cost, right?
And it could be valid, it could be valid, man.
Sure.
It could be. Right?
So, you know?
Right. And then you can go to, just anyone?
I do invite, I do invite the council, you want to take a particular look at the invoices, I mean, we're here, you know, to show you. I think, you know, uh, it would be best, and I know that we're kinda late, and we're trying to catch up, you know, so that it won't be as hard following meetings, you know? And, but, but, you know, we are available, you know, and, uh, those records are there for, for anyone, you know, to take a look at, you know, what we're spending on.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Um, if you, I don't know, print this up or anything, but in order, like he's saying that we can come to look into avoiding questions or any doubts, right? If you look at his newspaper here, if he's saying these are invoices from the past, and they are, they're all from May 6, all of them, so you're telling me all of this advertisement happened on that week, or that one newspaper, or did they just submit all their invoices following at one time?
All at one time.
But is that really, but is that really, uh, good practice?
It's because of the system.
Because of the system?
Yes. The system allows us, the system allows us only a few amount of information to be keyed in.
Okay.
It's a small system, not really designed for cities. It's not a fund accounting system, so you gotta enter the basics. You're not gonna be able to get as much detail as you want. We usually export that into Excel and then add, that is what this report is.
And the details?
Yes, because once they're paid, we're able to export that into Excel and then add the additional information that you want. Because those are unpaid, they're still out of the QuickBooks system.
They're not here yet.
Right.
Because you see why, why I'm asking? Someone comes and say an audit anyway, all of them on this?
Yes, that's why we export it into the Excel, but that's after, after the fact.
After we approve. See?
Well, before, the way they were doing it, they weren't getting the approvals prior to payment. The approvals being done after payments were already made.
Wow.
Yes, and that was a problem.
So you, so you're saying the system only allows very limited input of data, and so that's under opposite date?
Yeah. QuickBooks is designed for small companies, if you have, you know, a small business, but not for a city where you require fund accounting and proper cost distribution. You can't do that in this system. We have to export everything into Excel, and unless you know Excel, you won't be able to manipulate the reports.
And, and within the system, you know, uh, there, there are invoices in here that had, that has been approved by prior councils, uh, having to do with lease purchase equipment, heavy equipment, basically, uh, maybe office equipment. They're included in here. Actually, uh, they have, they already have an approval, but they're just bringing them back to, if you're aware of, of what they're spending.
Right, because it's a month.
They're in here also.
They're in charge, since it's a lease. So we have to include it in the amounts that we need to approve each month.
So when we go into a contract, let's say a, a track loader, he's talking about, you know, four thousand dollar piece of equipment, uh, the council approves that contract at a given time, and then a special, you know, is put out as to where we're going to have to make those payments. So those payments might, have to be made before the council leaves, and that's why they're set up, you know, before the council approves them before. And there, the bond issues, uh, lease purchases, uh...
Our electricity was one of them.
Right, and there's many other, you know, vendors at which we have to pay before.
Before, before.
Before we bring them.
And they're very messed.
But, but they're still bringing them to you even though they're paid already, just so that you're aware that they were paid, you know?
Mario, maybe I can compare that for the bond issue?
The, the bond issue, uh, the two thousand and twelve bond issue, a ten million dollar bond issue, uh, for the, uh, replacement of the water truck from the IV all the way to the galp course, uh, the repairs of all the water tanks, including the elevated tanks, uh, the, uh, the construction, the street construction, you know, that was done throughout the town.
And the Bank of New York, is that the million dollar?
Uh, those were the ones that we had, those are, the ones we had to refund. We refunded the old, the old bonds that we had in place at that tank, because we had a cheaper rate, you know? And so it saves like, like two, three thousand dollars, you know, through the term of all those, uh, bond issues.
My dear, then question, though. Who of what is, is it protect operation?
That's from the water now.
That's mine, I know, I approve, I approve. Yes, it comes from the water.
And they help, um, with the sewer plants. They have the contract, uh, right now it's on a band-aid, you know, so, that's part of all that.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I got the, what's that, right? Westex is the oil, I mean, the gas. The diesel. But that's only for the diesel, because the, um, regular fuel that we use for all the trucks, company trucks and everything, those are going through a company called Wex Leaked, uh, before everything was being purchased from, uh, Westex or Pico. But they couldn't provide us the discounted rates that the state has, so Wex came in and offered us that discount on top of, so whatever the published rates are out there, we don't pay that. We pay like a dollar something per gallon. And we can monitor that online based on each vehicle, because each vehicle gives a card to fuel. So, long story short, we did it because the, the bill for Pico Petroleum used to be twenty-something thousand a month, and we reduced it. The first month that we changed over, it dropped to three thousand a month.
Wow.
Why? Because now there's accountability per driver per vehicle. You cannot access that gas card without a PIN, and only that individual is allowed that PIN. Before, it was just, they were filling out the tank and going using it, and they had a log sheet, but, I mean, you're writing it down. This way, the system's actually...
Where's that company here that billed for?
The bill probably is not in there yet, for that month, because they didn't pay.
Because, I mean, I use it because it's a gas company, but why is it not with a water plan in order to...
Westex, because a lot of the fuel right now that is being used for, from that tank is going to the sewer plant.
The gas one?
They're using like two hundred gallons or something.
If you look at your, at your water, water account in there, it's all the way to the Desa pumps and equipment, uh, you can see what I was saying about the rental that we had, you know, uh, in order to, uh, keep the, not in operation, well, it's the rental pumps that we have out there, and that's where the diesel is going into.
Exactly.
And we're spending a lot on rentals, you know?
The rental and the...
And so we're, we're trying to find a quick fix on that, taking us to the chain of...
But just the rental cost and...
Yeah, just the rental itself, not, not any other, other costs that are involved with that.
Do you have any more questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome to stop by any time. Thank you.
We'll do it next time, I promise you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for a payment of bills for June 2015?
I make a motion that we approve the payment bills for June 2015.
All right, a second?
A second.
There's a motion made by Councilwoman Morales, a second by Councilwoman Fuente. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. All opposed, same side. Motion is carried. We go to item number eight, which is closed session. We'll be reviewing eight point one and eight point two in executive session. It is six forty-nine. Do you all have any questions?
I was about to say that.
Ready?
Yes.
We go to item number nine, open session at a seven fifteen. We go to item nine point one, discussion on appropriate action regarding settlement case of number fifteen dash zero five dash twelve five nine five dash C C D A J A, Francisco Fonce versus the City of Crezo Springs and Brenda Campione as city manager of the City of Crezo Springs in the three hundred and sixty-fifth Judicial District Court of Dimmitt County. Mr. Attorney, would you like to elaborate?
Yes, uh, yes, Mayor. Um, I'd like to take up to you to, to introduce myself to the citizens of Crezo Springs. I'm Marvin Morales. I'm one of the attorneys that works for, uh, Almaldonado. Uh, what, what we have here in this case is essentially the judge Fonce, uh, in an attempt, uh, attempt to wrongly terminate him, he did, he did institute a suit against the city. Uh, the judge, however, has no ill will toward the city. Obviously, he's, he's very much, uh, he's very much, uh, very concerned with the citizens of Crezo Springs. So what he has offered to do in this case is, in order to, to speed up the process, he's willing to dismiss the lawsuit. Uh, the only thing he's asking for is, is literally the amount of money he pulled out of his pocket to file the lawsuit, which is six hundred and fourteen dollars. That includes the filing fee and the service fee. So if the city is willing to, to reimburse him for that amount of money, uh, we will avoid any further litigation, any further litigation cost, as well as no attorney's fees. Uh, he would be entitled to attorney's fees if he was successful, uh, but he's foregoing, uh, any of those, including the attorney's fees he paid out of his own pocket. So he's just asking for the six hundred and fourteen dollars, and, uh, and if the city's willing to, to pay that and, and waive the conflict that exists in the case, then we would have a, an agreed, an agreed, uh, motion to dismiss the case. So, um, it, uh, it's, uh, it's completely up to the council, the city, if that's what they wanna do, but it is a, a way to finally resolve that case and have it completely dismissed.
Thank you.
Do I move to pay Judge Francisco Fonce a quick cost of hundred and sixty-four, six hundred and fourteen dollars in order to dismiss his lawsuit against the City of Crezo Springs and waive any conflict and finally resolve this matter?
Motion is made by Councilwoman Oscar Fuente. I second the motion to pay Judge Francisco Fonce six fourteen in order to dismiss the lawsuit against the City of Crezo Springs and waive any conflict. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We have one abstained, Councilwoman Morales. Uh, we have one admission, uh, indicate by saying aye. We, so there's a two, one count. Motion is carried. We go to nine point two, discussion on appropriate action regarding terminating the contract for engineering service with L N B Incorporated for City wastewater treatment plant improvements without any payment penalty or litigation.
Again, Mayor, uh, this, this is relation to the city waste water treatment plan. Uh, the city essentially executed two contracts with two different engineering firms. Um, we were able to, uh, stave off any litigation from Garcia and Wright, um, because we will be proceeding with them. However, that left out their N L B, and, uh, what we were able to, uh, discuss and, and come to resolution with, with them is, is they're willing to allow us to terminate their contract with the, with no further cost to them, uh, no further litigation, uh, essentially there are no penalties at all to the city. And with that, actually, will that, what that will result in, of course, is, um, we avoid a future lawsuit with Garcia and Wright, because, again, we had a contract with them, as well as a future lawsuit with potentially N L B. So, um, by terminating this contract, we're essentially avoiding two lawsuits that we would, could have potentially had. Um, it's being done with the building of those engineers at N L B, but, um, we feel that it's, it will be in the best interest of the, of the city to, to avoid two law, two future lawsuits, you know? So, uh, it, and it will finally resolve any kind of pending litigation that would have resulted from the city waste for water treatment plant. So, um, we, we feel that, uh, that if council believes it's in the best interest of the city, that we could, and terminate that contract with N L B without any further penalties against the city.
I make a motion to terminate the contract for professional services with L N B Incorporated for city wa, wastewater treatment plant improvements without any payment penalties or litigation to finally resolve this matter.
Motion is made by Councilwoman Morales. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second ma, second is made by Councilwoman Fuente. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion is carried. We go to item nine point three, discussion on appropriate action to appoint the attorneys of the law firm of Maldonado, Galván, Morales, Hakeem, and Diaz as municipal court prosecutors.
I make a motion to appoint the attorneys of the law firm Maldonado, Galván, Morales, Hakeem, and Diaz as municipal court prosecutors?
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Fuente. Seconded by Councilwoman Morales. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion is carried. We go to item nine point four, discussion on appropriate action regarding request by Aspen Medical USA Incorporated for a letter of authorization to provide emergency medical services EMS within the city limits. Mario?
Well, Mayor, I believe we have someone that, uh, with the company.
Council, your hon, your honorable mayor, where would you like for me to stand?
Um, right here in the corner.
Okay. Just, oh, I stand in my back everywhere. Here, you need, my name is Peggy Fonseca, I'm the director of emergency medical services for Aspen Medical USA, and we are, um, in compliance with the Health and Safety Code and our provider license one fifty-seven eleven, requesting a letter of authorization from the city council of Crezo Springs...
Joaquín, and Díaz as municipal court prosecutors.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Fuente. Seconded by Councilwoman Morales. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We go to item nine point four, discussion on appropriate action regarding request by Aspen Medical USA Incorporated for a little authorization to provide emergency medical services EMS within the city limits. Mario?
Well, Mayor, I believe we have someone that, that's a company.
Council, your honour, your honourable mayor, where would you like for me to stand?
Uh, right here in the.
Okay. Just, oh, I stand in my back everywhere. Here, you need, my name is Peggy Fonseca, I'm the director of emergency medical services for Aspen Medical USA, and we are in compliance with the Health and Safety Code and our provider license one fifty-seven eleven, requesting a letter of authorization from the City Council of Creosote Springs to operate in a, a capacity of mutual aid, an EMS provider, a transfer service, things like that. We are not here to devour any kind of existing EMS that you may have, we're not here to cause any problems, we're just, we're just doing what has been tasked with us by the state of Texas to, uh, this is an area we would like to operate in, so therefore we have to obtain a, a letter of authorization from you, Mayor and council of people, council, councilors, I'm sorry. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I just retired, I have twenty years of county government, I'm from Goliath County, originally was the MSG for Goliath County. I was a police officer, an emergency management coordinator, certified floodplain administrator, training officer. I, they, they had a lot of things that nobody went to do, so I always got bawled and told, and that, that just furthered my education. So I come from twenty years of county government, and I will assure you that with government, we have a lot of accountability and transparency to the taxpayer, and I'm just sitting here, I, I notice a lot of taxpayers, so they're very interested in your government. Uh, Aspen Medical is the same way, we, we will operate under a very high standard, we will not take any kind of, of, any kind of avenue where we would jeopardize the responder's safety, the patient's safety, or the public's safety. And this is exactly what we want to do, is we want to come in, we want to be a good neighbor, be a, a, a partner in whether we assist your, your current nine-one-one provider and your fire department. I know you're sitting in the Eagle Ford Shell, I'm very familiar with the Eagle Ford Shell providers and things like that, so basically, we're just asking for a letter of authorization to operate within your city limits. We have obtained a, a letter of authorization from the, from Demet County themselves in the Transportation Court, and that's basically what we need to do.
This is just for transportation?
Sorry?
Just for transportation?
Actually, uh, we obtained a letter of authorization, our goal right now is transfers, but in the late, letter of authorization, we want to cover it all, Councilwoman Fuente, we want to cover transfers, we want to cover mutual aid, we want to cover, you know, being able to back up your nine-one-one provider, or, you know, if, should you wish to request an RFP for emergency medical services, we would like an option to bid on that, too. Things like that, that's what we, we just want to get the whole gamut, so we're not caught in a, we can't help you because we're not authorized by you to do that. Yes.
So basically, you come forward to ask for permission to offer your services as needed or on a?
As, as needed, or coming through to pick up a patient from here to transfer to Fort Duncan, or to Del Rio, or to San Antonio, we're just looking, Mayor, to obtain some, you know, authorization to just, to move patients out and into, to the City of Creosote Springs.
Okay, now these calls will be made by who? Who, who will call you for your services if we authorize you?
Uh, the, the patient can call us, um, the, the hospital, the nursing home, the adult daycare, things like that. It, it is going to be patient oriented, we're not going to come in and sell a subscription, you know, we're not going to say, uh, Mayor, if you would like for us to pick you up, you, you pay a fifty dollar subscription, we're not going to do anything like that. That is not how we are going to be governed or, or set up. So the, the patient will be the call originator. And, uh, let me tell you a little bit about our service, we will have a professional dispatch service, there'll be an eight hundred number. Aspen Medical has invested lots and lots of capital into this project. We have a home office at Maverick County Hospital District, you know, we're on the second floor, suite two ninety. We are bringing in four ambulances. Um, they are all going to be leveled, uh, basic life support M I C U capable, they will have the latest and greatest equipment to move a critical care patient or to assist in a nine-one-one call, whatever. We will not have to stop and pick something up, we'll be ready, ready to engage any time you wish to engage us. Now, we are in a electronic billing service, you know, we have a contract, we have electronic patient records and a contract billing service, so we, as Aspen Medical USA, have invested a lot of capital, and we want to be part of your community, you know, we want to be involved in your Fourth of July picnic next year, we want to be involved, you know, in your football games, your chamber of commerce. We come in and really want to be part of the community in which we serve. So, that's basically what we want to do, and that's what we will do, should we grant, you grant the letter of authorization.
This letter of authorization is required by the state?
Yes, ma'am, we're in the initial. We're in the initial phase of licensing, and as, as the Texas Association, the Texas Administrative Code one fifty-seven eleven says that we need to obtain a letter of authorization in any county and city we wish to operate in. So that's what we do. We have Demet County, we would like to get the cities to Demet County, yes, ma'am.
Do you have any questions? I do. Thank you for wanting to work our community. Um, and just to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
You're saying that you're here to offer assistance, that, that the patient will call you, that the patient will, will be the caller, that you want to assist, but in the letter that indicates, will not interfere with or adversely affect the provisions of services licensed by EMS providers currently operating in the city, and the other statement is will not cause an oversupply of EMS providers to the city. So how will your services not interfere with what's written here? Can I ask that question first to Mr. Martinez and then to you, is that right?
No, of course, of course, first place, you know, he can't do any nine-one-one calls, he can't take those.